Okay. All right. We have the, uh, have motion to open public hearing with a tax cap.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
A second.
Motion made, seconded, to open the public hearing in regard to the tax cap override. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry it. Any comments?
Is that talking to let us talk?
Hey, Brian.
Are you allowing us to talk?
Sure.
Just in regards to the tax cap at this point.
Yeah, I guess I have something to say. My name's Kent Carlton, I live sixty-four oh eight, County Route seven, Prattsburg, New York. I own property and pay taxes in the town. Next year it'll be fifty years. I kinda thought that all the commotion these last two years, that all these wind tower scenarios were gonna be part of the new revenue forecast and stuff like that. So I guess I'm a little bit, I don't understand. I mean, the state of New York had that two or three percent cap, and I understand, you know, with increased inflation and everything else, that it makes a lot harder to make the budgets and things like that. But on the same, the same basis, the town already has the prob, the ability through the assessment of increasing people's assessment value, which means you pay more taxes. So why all of a sudden do you need to go past two or three percent? And I was here during the days when it went up seven percent, eight percent, ten percent in a year's time. Unfortunately, at that point, I was working, you know, forty hours a week and stuff like that. I'm not anymore. I mean, my income include Social Security and a couple of small pension funds. And besides the STAR program and a bit of, uh, the help on its town taxes with the veterans allotment and stuff like that, I mean, I'd be paying five thousand, fifty-five hundred dollars a year, two thousand, about twenty-one hundred for school, fifty, there's thirty-two for, for town. And when you take fifty-five hundred dollars and you wanna increase it, uh, when you're only making thirty or forty thousand dollars a year, that's a pretty big hit. And, I mean, I'm not saying this to be derogatory or anything, but I really can't understand how five people on the school board can constantly come up with one or two percent a year increases. If you take everybody there, plus the highway crew and stuff like that, the school has a hundred or so teachers and administrative staff and a bus company to run and stuff like that, and every year, they've been managing to come up with one or two percent increase. And no offense, again, I've heard that story, uh, we're never gonna use it, don't worry about it, you know, just give us four or five, or give us whatever we want over, we're never gonna use it. Well, it turns out that it always gets used. So I'm just saying, for people that are on a fixed income, and the town of Prattsburg, from the last census, is almost thirty pi, thirty-eight percent of residents are sixty-five years old or older. The national average is like about twenty-five percent old people, twenty-five percent kids, and fifty percent in the, in the middle of X, Y, Z, millennial gen, or whatever. So between twenty-six, twenty-seven percent and thirty-eight or thirty-nine percent, everybody knows that the young people are leaving this town. The only people left are gonna be people like me that, you know, either like it up here because we're crazy and we like the view, or they can't afford to go anyplace else. And if I'm gonna pay extra taxes, I'd like to know what I'm gonna pay the taxes for. I've lived on that hill ten years now since I retired, and no offense, but the only, the only thing I get from the town of Prattsburg is the snow plowed in the wintertime, and John keeps the grass cut.
Now, that maybe could explain what the tax cap, what we do here is, uh...
Well, the local law that would be kind of plan to be adopted tonight does not raise the budget per se. In New York State, if you go over the two percent, you have to have adopted a local law to exempt you from the penalties that the state imposes. I haven't seen a budget, I don't know what the proposal is, whether there is an increase, whether it's close, or what the situation is. But this local law has nothing to do with the actual budget itself, other than the fact that if the town happens to exceed the tax cap, and it's not necessarily just two percent, it's different, it's usually different than that, it's usually like one point seven percent or whatever it is. But it's only if the end budget goes over that percentage from last year, that this law goes into effect, and it prevents any penalties. And the town board is doing this so that in the event that budget does exceed that two percent or one point seven percent increase, that there aren't any penalties that the state imposes. So, and the budget isn't done yet, so...
I don't know if, if anyone, I wish, at this point, Jeanette was here at the moment. We usually end up repealing the tax cap towards the end of the year when we have not exceeded the tax cap. And I would say, the better part, if not all of my eight years here, we've always done that. So we managed to stay under the cap, but I think we see, have seen it as a better safeguard in the event that we have some kind of, some issue come up that we have to be able to, if, if we see a need. One of, some of those needs that we've discussed in the past have been things like a new barn, the, the current highway barn is, is not in good shape. It's exceeded its expected life by a number of years, and if we don't start allocating money towards those things, um, we may end up being in a world of hurt. And other streams of revenue have not come to pass, I guess is probably the best way to say it. So, so, not to say that we are going to all of a sudden put two hundred thousand dollars towards building or something this year, um, but we need to start putting money away. It's, it's every few years, we're spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on vehicles, so we allot money towards that to keep our vehicle budget up, to make sure that we have the right equipment to follow the roads and do those kind of things, and, I don't know if anyone's got anything else to add. I, I think that it's in our best interest to be prepared to do that if, if we, if we find the need, but I think every year, uh, for the last seven or eight years, we've been able to keep it below the tax gap, and we end up repealing it later on, if that helps at all. I don't know that you've seen a four or five percent increase in my years here.
No.
I mean, we've kept it below, just in our normal budget process. I think that we're fairly strict on what we allow increases for, but we have been, or at least I feel that we have been. Not to say that there's been any kind of reduction, because there has not been, but at least we've been able to manage minimal increases over the last seven or eight years.
Well, I think this year is gonna be extraordinary with things like fuel and, you know, a lot of raw materials are increasing in price, the raw materials for road repair and maintenance and things like that. So that's why you have to leave yourself an, an option and not, you know, lock yourself into staying under the tax cap. Fuel's going up, workers' comp goes, well, actually, no, I think workers' comp went down this year, but things like, you know, retirement benefits and things like that, that are state mandated, that we don't really have control over, health insurance, those all go up. And so we have to start with those things that we have no control over, and then work backwards from there in the budget, and say, okay, where can we maybe cut what we thought we were gonna increase to compensate for the things that we have really no control over.
Yeah, just to speak to some of what John said, our levy last year was lower than it had been in, in a year and a past five. So that the tax levy is, has actually been quite low, almost to a fault. And we have seen revenues drop, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand in twenty seventeen, and down to seven hundred twenty-one thousand in twenty twenty-one. So we are up against it, but despite that, the budget stayed low.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I understand that. The, the only thing is that everybody that's on the tax roll, in most cases, all pay school tax too, and you're, I mean, you're telling me that, like, that you're gonna be the only one that's gonna get a, a fuel increase tax or something like that. I mean, they're running fifteen or twenty buses a day compared to maybe ten, and I realize a ten-wheeler or something like that probably gets a hell of a, a heck of a lot less gas mileage than a, a school bus and stuff like that.
Well, they don't, they don't own the, they don't own the school buses, they contract with the, a private company, the Prattsburg.
Right, but that's part of their budget.
Right, right.
I mean, they have to pay, they're, they're, they're not doing that for free.
Right, no, 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 I understand that, but, you know, in terms of purchasing, but the school also has different allocations of financial aid from the state. We don't benefit from the aid that schools benefit from. So there is that too, I mean, you have to factor that. They, I mean, we get sales tax and things like that, but the schools actually get a financial aid based on a formula, so...
Like the, like the, the school, I think, I'm...
School budget is laid in.
Yeah, I think their budget was close to ten million, I think they got almost eight million dollars in state aid, so we only, we're only paying the tax on the two million, two or three million dollars.
And I also thought that, I mean, all this clamor about the, the windmills and stuff like that, I thought, you know, as hard as you people are pressing for them and stuff like that, that, uh, that was gonna be the next best thing to slice bread, to bring in revenue and stuff like that. Yes, no, not so much?
Taken out of our hands, the state is almost taking that over.
And I'll just have you know that we passed the, one of the most restrictive laws in the New York State for wind laws. So when you said we're clamoring for them, I think that that's a little harsh, um, you know, for a judgmental comment like that, for a board that did pass, collectively passed a, a tough wind law. So, um, there's no money on the horizon, like, in the short term, for windmills.
If we did have a...
Per project or anything.
If, if we did have a windmill project, the way that works, let's, let's say we had a two hundred thousand dollar payment in lieu of taxes from, from a wind farm, that amount gets reduced from our tax levy, so from a ability to pay bills, the town gains nothing. The taxpayers gain a break, but the town gains nothing in terms of its ability to pay its bills, unless we work out some kind of really amazing host, community host agreement.
If you're interested in the budget, there will be a hearing on the budget before it's adopted, so you certainly have a right to have a copy of the proposed budget, to go through it, comment at the hearing, and ask questions about various lines in the budget, and the amounts that are proposed.
Okay.
Anybody else?
What is the penalty if you don't do this, from the state? Is there a percentage, like, if you say you don't, don't do this, and then we go over the two percent or one point seven, what is the penalty from the state?
Too kind of alluded to even trying to explain, I'm sorry. I wouldn't even try, but to a layperson outside of the municipal government world, you probably think, this is stupid, why are you going through all this baloney? Adapting laws and then repealing them? Well, it's because the state of New York adopted this process through state legislation, and we're forced to do it, in order to protect the people and the property owners of the town.
They like to justify their existence.
Yeah, I know.
Your brother?
I guess I would just say, you know, the, the budget work is ongoing, and it would be great if you were here at the next budget, you know, hearing. We always appreciate input.
If there's, uh, one of us, uh...
Make a motion that we close the public hearing on the tax cap?
On the second?
Motion made, seconded, we close the, the, the public, public hearing on the tax cap, uh, override resolution, or, well, everybody, who's the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'm, I'm... All right.
Now, did you just vote on, on the resolution?
No, we go into...
Close the public hearing.
Open the public hearing, I...
You got the resolution next on the...
Yeah. Okay. Now, you got to copy that resolution, Brian. I got, somebody else remember, I got a little wish, but...
Well, we all have it.
Yeah, she sent it earlier, so...
I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt the local law authorizing a real property tax levy in excess of the limit established by general municipal law, section three C.
Does everybody read the resolution?
Yeah, yeah.
Then you don't have to read it, come on.
Yep.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, to adapt the, uh, the resolution as read. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Carry it. All right, now, uh, minutes, uh, does everybody have a chance to?
Nope.
Come over?
Not at all.
No?
No, they just came today.
No.
Or these came?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So which ones did?
They did come today, but they came...
You're right, they did, yeah, okay, they did. But I didn't realize you were gonna, we haven't been doing minutes.
No, I, and we don't have to do them right now, we don't want, I mean, it's already gonna be a long meeting, so that's fine if we don't, you wanna put it off?
There's no state regulation law or otherwise you'd have to approve, but it's good practice to do it.
Yeah, I'd like, I would like to at least read them, I just haven't had a, didn't have a chance to.
So you wanna just put it off?
Could we, yep. How's everybody else feel about that?
Yeah, I'm...
Okay, good.
There are three of them, so...
Yeah.
Okay. Cheesy. All right, uh, financial report.
Do you have one in file, this, who's on, sorry, I missed it.
She's looking at everything too.
No, she doesn't, I know.
The hair school's been real fun. It's been chilling.
She...
Working through it?
Yeah, yeah. I saw you at the nine eleven thing, but I didn't get a chance to say, I saw you, yeah.
I'll make a motion to acceptify any reports that are presented.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, to acceptify as a report, as, as reported, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, carry it. All of them?
You know, we had some questions. Kim, the one for the USDA Rural Development says for interest payment, eight thousand six hundred and ten. Are you paying all the interest on that, or is there a separate invoice for, to actually not to balance down?
Um, I, I don't know, but definitely a question for Jeanette, I don't know.
It's not clear, and, and you said it looked like interest only payment. Does principal due zero, interest due eight thousand six hundred and ten?
Do you know, Fred, do you know about that, do you say that on, in, in the press? Sure.
I don't. It's given to me by...
I'm assuming it was a water project, but there's no principal payment, it just interest only.
That's, uh, that, Jeanette?
I haven't looked at it. Did you have a little beer? A little beer?
Eighty-six hundred bucks.
Yeah, that was our reaction.
That's a fair reaction, I think. Jeanette's coming a little bit here.
Yeah.
Need some background on that one.
So we're just gonna go back to all the bills after she comes?
Or we can pass them with the, the exception of these...
I mean, they're probably the best one.
We have another one, it's, uh, oh, John already addressed this one, no, it's for the do not pay, okay, so we know that'll...
What's that?
For weed control, apparently, they're sending us product that we haven't ordered, so we didn't wanna pay for it. And then there was, uh, the last one here is marked as a journal voucher for, um, some various things from the under, just to undercharge that service, but there's not really a clear amount, it's, it's a, a couple different numbers under, two sixty-five, three twenty-five. I'm not even sure if it's a payment.
How do is the interest paid?
Is that, is that half of the, half of the song?
Cause she... As a, uh, appropriation song, assuming they... Want me to run a caller?
No, we can wait for it, we can maybe pass through the...
Should be here.
Looks like these are, once she's levied, people aren't, you know, aren't paying her bill. What I'm gathering now, that's...
Well, we're gonna hold it, should be here, not too long.
Is this the levy that it comes? You can't do that, so...
It's not, the common.
Now, what, what is the interest under this? What code is she, does she assign it to, on the voucher?
It was under the general, wasn't it?
SW ninety-seven ten point seven.
Okay, yeah, cause there is a budget in there, um, she's got principal and interest separated out, so I'm assuming, but it still would lie, I'm assuming. It is a budgeted thing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I just wanted to ask, interest is... Definitely, yeah.
I mean, it wasn't the same.
See you, Cap. Take care, Cap.
Well, that's what those are. Those are water bills, they're called practice, right?
Yeah, we think.
Oh, she just asked them to be...
It's just normally, if nothing's totaled up or anything, it's like...
Yeah, some barns, highway here.
Barnage.
Make that shot.
Bird, bird, the...
We don't pay the bird, huh? You said bird, wasn't it?
No, the district pays, well, the parker district pays the...
Yeah.
The parker district pays, but I say all of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, but yeah, not that part there.
You're supposed to make the other day? Me? So should we hold it up on it, just give some more work, it's not the exceptions, there's not total up or anything?
Okay.
All right.
Don't they do the same with the appropriations?
Or...
Well, like, kind of bills, but why are we appropriating to youth service? How could they have gone over budget?
Well, we're the two, sorry, I don't have my budget in front of me, but there's youth service and youth... Youth service, I feel like that's the dosent one.
Well, what?
But I, and, and not...
Have you guys been using docents?
We haven't used the docents, but...
This year.
We mowed a lot.
Right, yeah.
So maybe it's the mowing that they are?
Um, but...
So unfortunately, that may be a question better suited for Jeanette, only in that I just wonder if it looked like we weren't gonna use some of the money, so some of the money had been allocated elsewhere.
Okay, so you, yeah, youth services is the docents and the groundskeeper.
So what was budgeted in that, if I can ask?
Uh, it was, um, nine hundred was budgeted, but so far, she, it said actually here to date, two hundred eighty-eight, but then there's an appropriation to that line, which means they went over budget, so I'm curious to know about...
Or, or it was reappropriated. Or it was re-appropriated earlier, cause in the thought that it wasn't going to be used, and then it was, so we have to re...
Okay.
If, if that, I'm not, but I would like, yeah. Like, that's just...
As of the time that that was, until the end of August.
Our youth service, we got, they got, the kids have worked with, I just imagine that.
Yeah, but they haven't had any docents, they just sent the mowing.
And then, uh...
But it shouldn't be over budget, it shouldn't be.
It shouldn't be.
It, it, like I said, only if she took one out of that, I'm just looking.
No, they were, they were open, uh, so, like, a couple times.
Yeah, but you didn't use them.
Yeah, but we didn't use the docents for that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Just volunteers were down there.
It's not on the...
No. I'm just looking at older, I have older, um...
I do, I know.
Yeah.
Well, we can ask them.
Keep the list, I'll hold.
I'm gonna make sure that she's coming. No, we'll hold that.
Are we waiting for Jeanette?
No. Oh, yeah, for that, maybe, yeah.
Yes.
Oh.
Okay.
So, we've been putting aprons on rows, and we have been mowing, we got a boom mower from Pauline, and as we're starting to boom mow around a little bit, we haven't done that in a year and a half. And we're just put plow frames back on plows this morning to get ready for incoming snow, and just bought a truck, bought a payloader, and I'm keeping this short and sweet, so that's it. I just, I have one, one question is, we talked to the union rep about Casey getting a week's vacation, and the union rep said it would not set a precedent, it would be by a case-by-case basis, and it would be only due to whenever they were hired, so I need board approval to let Casey have a week's vacation. If somebody wanna make a motion, or decline one?
Wait a minute, is that paid? Is that, how, Casey is, is that paid for Casey?
Yeah, well, Casey started in December of last year, and he's not up for any... Yeah, well, Casey started in December of last year, and he's not up for any vacation until the fourteenth of December. And because of the plumbing situation, he won't be able to have a vacation until maybe April.
What I'm concerned about is verbally agreeing this with the union, because you get in. You need something writing.
All right, well, never mind, I'm not, I'm not gonna fight with everybody, just, I don't have time nor the patience. So. Never mind.
You could hear a different story next time around.
Yep.
Well, if the union wants to send notice, you can tell them if they wanna send notice.
Just send a brief letter saying this.
Well, and we're just to the point now, it's the end, almost the end of October, we could have snow in another two weeks. You know, and I can't send him, he'd just have to work. If he decides to have vacation after the fourteenth of December, I'll just work short.
Yeah, so I'm just send a letter saying that it won't be perceived as a past practice.
It might not be until next board meeting, I tried to do this before, and they told me, no, we gotta wait till a board meeting, so the next board meeting won't be until end of November. So that's all right, go move on, I'll just.
Board, if I overrule me, I'm just giving you advice best, I might be on my experience.
I've plowed it short before, I can plow short again.
Well, I know he's a good man.
I mean, would it be prudent for us?
Yeah, we could.
To put it in writing and.
They have to agree to it, that's the fact. Usually you do a memorandum of understanding or something like this. I'm not trying to cause a big rigmarole for anybody.
No, you're a hundred percent. You're, you're not doing anything wrong yet, I'm just saying, I'm just not gonna worry about it, we'll just move on. Well, I think unfortunate, as I know where you're coming from, I think without some kind of letter from the union, I think is a hundred percent.
That's perfectly fine.
Correct on that. And we just, just show you, sorry, the crappy part of how to. You know, obviously we all know him, we know he's a hard worker and everything, but technically he's not supposed to have anything until after December.
Yeah, no, it's perfectly fine.
The board told me to go and get, ask the union first before we did anything, and I just exactly did that, they had, the union sure to ask me.
You were, I don't think you were at that meeting though, that that came up, that's probably.
Thursday?
No, no, it was.
September?
Yeah. It was the asset meeting, yeah.
So, so what, any email response, some suffice?
Anything from the union, so they can put it front and say, uh-uh, it's not a past practice.
You agree to it.
And Janet doesn't have to be the one, it doesn't, if somebody else.
If we did agree to it, continue on getting uh something back from the union.
I would support that, it shouldn't take much.
That's very logical, that's logical.
All right, I guess the question is, is Casey planning to take any vacation? I don't know, I'm just gonna give him the option, I'm assuming he probably would like to try to get one in. So, I mean, is this in lieu of the vacation that he'd be eligible for after the fourteenth?
Yeah, he would, he would get two vacations, it would be. He would be able to take it, so if he takes it now.
He'd use one week early.
How many does he get, how many vacations?
At two, have two weeks after December fourteenth.
After, okay, so two weeks, so he would be able to take another one week vacation, but not.
Right.
His full two, I mean, he would take two in the future or one now and then one.
Right.
So, yeah.
If he declines to wanna take a vacation now, he'll have two weeks, he can take any time after March. Grateful, when the weather trades up again.
Now, can they take days off here and there?
Not in the winter. Not unless we know it's gonna be good weather.
But I mean, like, but vacation, do they have to take a whole week, or can they take individual?
They can take individual days.
Okay.
I think basically what we're doing is not, we're not giving them additional weeks.
No, no.
We're allowing to u- utilize his vacation. A little earlier.
Yes.
Which makes a hundred percent sense. It, it wouldn't even be an issue if he was hired in May, then he'd be here, and then he could have three months, he could take his vacation. It's just the fact he started December fourteenth of last year.
Well, it was agreeable, that's uh. Like I said, if we get some confirmation from the union. Would it be agreeable?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, continue on written confirmation. You know, that it doesn't set a precedent moving forward.
A second.
Motion made in second, if we get confirmation from the union regarding Casey Whitmore's ability to take a week's vacation this year.
I say, I would say start his allowed vacations earlier. Than his one year.
Okay, earlier than what is due, but it. It'll be taken away from his lot of vacation for next year. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, great.
Okay, I, the union steward getting a hold of Melinda tomorrow and send me an email.
Yeah.
Or I have to send it right to Kelly.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, uh. Water.
All right, since last month, we issued nine, nine permits. One renewal, did four billion inspections, we had twenty-eight UFPOs, issued one CBO. Had two compliance inspections and issued three compliance orders. And see, on October fifth, seventh and eighth, with the town council, we went up to eight-one-three-three, hundred seventy-five to try and deliver a compliant order. He refused to come to the door, so on the third attempt, we just take that to the door for the law, and as like that.
And mailed another, mailed a package to everyone.
Hopefully. Um, yeah, and we are preparing two more, two for parent tickets to court. On two of the property that I've written up lately. And to the joy of Chris, he has started his coat train this week. This is a rough one today. He did have a little more hair on him this morning than he came out this afternoon, but.
Now, did you start actual training somewhere, or are you on the job training?
It's, no, no, it's state, state, we're state players, so. And on the water side, we read meters on the twenty-first and twenty-second of September. And then went back out on the twenty-eighth to re-read several that had weird or unusual reads, so we had to go back out and reconfirm them. Sent in the monthly lottery report for September. We replaced two meters in bases. And on the twenty-third, excuse me, of September, we had a main break at the intersection of Fairgrounds and hundred seventy-four. We got that repaired, and that line does not look good at all. We actually had a rather difficult time getting it to seal, which is due to the, I mean, it just fitted bad.
Now, where was that, Fairgrounds and where?
Seven, corner down here at seventy-four.
Oh, okay.
Fairgrounds, right there by double primary. Okay, um, so that didn't look good, so hopefully we don't have too many more. I don't know, it's just not in good shape.
How far up the, from the corner was that, Fred?
Oh, from where we crossed, where they put the new line in, probably about eight tons feet.
So we just figure, what? Not far off the new line then, right?
Right.
Right.
But we figure what happened is, when the town had to put the new sluice in, the old sluice ran obviously under, and the uh main was basically sitting on top of the old concrete, and it just probably shifted a little bit, it was probably already broke.
Right.
Anyway, but it just, you know, so.
So let me refer some of the highway budget.
I mean, it was.
Well, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take all my man hours up and then help you guys put that pipe together.
Yeah.
So it's a separate line.
Um, and then on the twenty-fourth, at one AM, I got an alarm down at the pump house, we had no communication. Went down and there wasn't anything obvious, I called Empire, they didn't have any, confusedly, a lot of times it's something with the internet or whatever. But they didn't have any issues, so I had them put a work order in, so I met with them, they're attacked on Saturday morning. And we went through everything down here, there wasn't any issue, we went up to the tank, they didn't have any issues, and then, I don't know, um by looking at the panel up there, noticed that the one, the encryption board was not lit. And called up Aqualogics and that's what the issue was, so I tacked it up, sent it over to them, I thought was next day air, or next day mail, but I guess we don't have that anymore. So that was Saturday, then received it, what was it, Tuesday? Tuesday.
Tuesday morning.
And then they had it fixed, and they sent it out on another way, and I got, we got it the next day, so.
GPS red.
In fact, that afternoon, we got it put back in, and we're back to normal, but in the meantime, from that Saturday till Tuesday, we were running everything on a manual, and Chris and I took turns running up to the tank, check the level, make sure there wasn't anything. You know, our big concern was obviously a main break, and we wouldn't know anything about it.
Now, when you got that call at one AM, did you go to?
No.
There is a issue.
So.
What was get their call?
Okay, and then um. All right, and then in the meantime, well, we uh I've been figuring this was gonna happen, the old demo saw finally cracked out on us, and I can't even tell you how old that is, it's probably twenty years or better. So we had to do a quick purchase of that, I did get a couple different quotes. We ended up going to Hoover's. They were cheaper anyways than they had them right there in stock, the other outfit, it was gonna be three, three weeks or not, three months, right, Chris?
Three months?
Yep. So we had to buy one of them, and we did go in HZ with the highway on that. And then during the project down here, they uncovered, the T and R uncovered one of our mains on the abandoned section of Howell Street. They were really wanting to cut it out, and I kinda said no. Got ahold of Jason, we discussed it, and then in the meantime, we, we figured out that it was live, it's actually live, I thought was shut off.
Right.
And then, and then during more checking into, we found three valves that we didn't know we had. And we got them dug up, repaired valve boxes so that we could actually use them. So we now have three more that we didn't know we had. One was what, better than a foot?
Underneath.
Under pavement, so that thing hasn't seen daylight for probably fifty years, you know. But um. And see, we dug up and replaced a fire hydrant behind Marketplace, that was in dire need of replacement, that's pretty important hydrant. And we had a leak in a meter pit on hundred seventy-four that we repaired. And then Chris cleaned up all the debris from that tree that fell on toward the electric off the pump house, we got that all cleaned up, so.
With the help of the highway, with the help of the highway. You weren't there for it, cause that was on Sunday. Just Chris and I.
Did you want to touch on that?
I don't want, oh, um, we got the new quote from for the Badger upgrade, I had a lemonade, some stuff that um like they, you know, wanted to do the two antennas, two receivers, we don't really need the two, because we don't have any of the new ones. So we'll just have to, once we start having to buy the new ones, then we'll have to address that. But I think it knocked it down what, four thousand, something like that? The other quote right behind it.
Fourteen, one sixteen.
And then there's one for ten in the middle.
That was, disregard that, we're not even gonna get into that, so.
Well, the only thing I would say is that if it's eighteen for both. But it's twenty-four to do them separately, that would not be a big deal for us.
Twenty-three, come up with twenty-four.
So, like, cause the what, the piece that's missing from this is included on the next one, I think.
So the ten thousand dollar one, that's for all um.
Cellular.
Cellular, that's not even anything.
The way it's going, but we're not even there yet.
Oh, cellular, like via phone as opposed to, or iPad?
Cellular read, basically, it, it's, it's kinda like that one system we discussed several years ago, that everything, excuse me, everything is read from here. You get four reads a day. But there is some, um, that's for the newer meters. If I remember that, if, if I'm right on that, right, Chris?
Yeah, it definitely won't ruin the meters we have.
The meters that we have in place now.
So it would force you, while that may be a great option down the road.
Right.
You'd have to spend the sixty thousand dollars to put in, perhaps two hundred, three hundred, two hundred dollar meters or more.
Yes.
So, all at once, and that's what we don't want.
So.
So, so for the one that we've lost then, from this quote, if we start putting in new ones next year, we gotta manually read those?
We would have to just purchase that other trans, transfer.
But if that's next year, then what I would say is that.
I don't anticipate that happening.
I, yeah, we have enough meters for.
We're, we're probably a couple of years.
With the old stuff.
Yes.
We're a couple of years down the road.
Well, the second, what we have to work, the second newest ones, the CD.
Our new ones.
The new, newer ones.
So, the new ones to us are obviously to everybody else. If it's that.
They're only what, six years old?
It's, it's subtle things like the five thousand dollar training, once we get the new meter, like the new, the new reader, if we gotta do another five thousand dollar training, then that's ten thousand on training as opposed to the five, if you bought both of the thirty-five hundred dollar units upfront.
So I guess we could just ask press if we would have to go through the training or just get the new antenna, because the, the training's for the more for the reader than the antenna.
Yeah. I mean, it's fifteen, just shy of fifteen thousand. If you wanna take a look, but basically it's lumping off the little ways back, you'll see that there's two different, a receiver and a trans saver, both are thirty-five point five, one of those thirty-five point fives is gone.
A little later. That'll be, bring up this higher bill, lower bill.
Can I read it? To town board, I am requesting a leniency for the water bill for seventeen Pratt Street, I had a broken pipe, which is now fixed, thank you for understanding, Elizabeth Knapp. The last three water bills, actually water bill here is two hundred and eighty-five dollars. In the last four were thirty-five, thirty-eight, twenty-four, one thirty-two, eighty-three, and thirty-five. If you do the math, add them together, divide by four, it would be sixty dollars and twenty-seven cents. And. So, I guess with that, it would propose that using our standard methodology, that we allow them one time, once per year, I think is what our laws is. Once per year, leniency, um.
Calendar year.
Yes, calendar year. Using our standard formula, which would equate to a reduction from two hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-four cents to sixty dollars and twenty-seven cents. A second. Motion made in seconded to approve the reduction of Elizabeth Knapp water bill at seventeen Pratt Street from two hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-four cents to six, using the standard formula, sixty dollars and twenty-seven cents, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Other than the reader.
So it'll be eighteen thousand four hundred is the. So, the eighteen thousand four hundred is the one you're leaning to, but do I understand that, um. Of that thirty-five hundred will be removed for the second?
The newest one, that should be the top one, that's fourteen, fourteen thousand change, right? That's what the one that's.
Fourteen eight seven five.
That's just what I'm reading up.
Okay, so the second one was for the two.
That was for both cradles.
The second one technically is for the iPad cellular reader. That total's ten thousand, right?
No.
Ten, ten and some.
Yes.
I did forget the ten thousand.
And then the third one, the original quote.
So, I think to John's point, Fred, I think we'd pay to ask him about the training deal, because if it's, if it's gonna be paying ten thousand dollars for training.
I'd rather have one training for the five grand and then get the other thirty-five hundred dollar meter added if.
Sure.
The only thing is, the only crappy thing is, is that meter might sit here for two years without being used, if we've got two years worth of meters that we can use of the older type. Unless we start transitioning sooner and then, if they buy back some of the older meters.
That's a, yeah, that's a question that's gonna ask, is, I wonder if there's a, it's just a bit of, all that for those older meters, I mean, there's an old system. That are, I've got manually read. You know, our old meters, there's a sale place to.
You mean to buy the, the ones that we're using now? I wouldn't even have a clue what that is. Cause typically, it's, it's like, um, I can't think what the word is, I don't, franchise, I don't know if that's the right term or not. But like with the Badgers.
It's proprietary.
Thank you, that's, yeah, and you know, until, until Blair lost the account with Badger, that was the only place to get them from. And now, it's this outfit, so.
Don't you belong to a organization of water?
For water? I guess I could ask them.
That would be a place to talk to.
I can't tell you, you're not just another pretty face, you know.
I think while I'm sleeping here.
I mean, part of it is, if we start buying the new meters, maybe there's a, like, they'll buy back the old ones, it's sunk cost, we've already paid for the old ones, but.
There, there is a percentage, depending on the age. Okay, like the gray ones that we have, I just throw them away. You know, I, I took a bunch back one day and they just basically laughed and said, you're kidding, you're still using these?
How many of those do we have?
What, the gray ones? In use?
No, no.
We don't have any.
I don't mean used ones, I'm saying ones on the shelf, you said that we have a bunch.
None of the gray ones, we only have the CDs on the shelf. We have the middle generation. We have the newer old style. Or the older, whatever.
Yeah, no, I don't think. So, if you can find out if, about the training, that piece, that if we can, we would have to pay for another training and potentially next year, the year after, whatever, it's still ten thousand dollars versus thirty-five hundred, you know, or you save fifteen hundred dollars. Something.
I would think that when the training would kind of bear itself.
I would hope so, but.
It's redundant.
They're, they're charging everyone alike for that training.
Oh, it's unbelievable.
Pushbacking.
Two days.
Two days, sixteen, not sixteen hours of training, five thousand fifty, that's three hundred twelve dollars an hour. You gotta push back on that, that seems absurd. When we push back in the copier, for Tony's recommendation, and that worked out well, we had nothing to lose, right?
I, I did push back on the training, the exorbitant, the cost of the training and, um. His, his answer was, that's what Badger charges for the training, and, and being a distributor. I, I, I don't, like I said, I'm, we're happy to go back and say.
Maybe I can give, um. I think his name's Ken, um, the Badger, yeah, give him a call and see what we can do with that.
You know, just like complaining about the eight cents per meter, making sense per meter.
If they know you gotta go with Badger, they're gonna hit you, they're gonna force you to pay that, if you're. If it looks to them like you're shopping around for another system.
I mean, what do you think?
Maybe they'd budge on it.
What is, what's the training entail? I mean, do we know, or we just think, is it something we, we need, or?
I think part of it's gonna be them coming in and, and teaching, basically, do not, she's the one who handles all that, you know.
It's, 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 it's installation and training, right?
For riding around for a day.
Correct.
Would.
One day's worth of installation and testing and then the other day is really training. It's, it goes back to proprietary, it's, they feel they have the over barrel, just like, like I said, that meter charge that we've never paid. And we should be lucky that you never had to pay it.
Right.
For the last ten or fifteen years, or twenty years, or whatever. But you have to pay going forward.
There's a net too.
But, you know, like I, part of it is, is their understanding that if we go with someone else, we have to go and spend the sixty thousand dollars on meters. You know, to replace every single meter we have and, and some of those options for Neptune or whatever were up to four hundred dollars a meter. So, you know, over sixty grand anyway. To do them all at once, because they won't work with Badger.
The length, the length of the system bothers me a little bit too, I'd say twenty years. That goes by in a week. But. Well, take a first look. I'm gonna learn, maybe come to the office today. I don't think we're game, or we've already addressed it, but, you know.
Well, the big question is, is just, do we have to pay the training all over again when we get to the second?
But as far as the cost, I don't. I don't see a budget on that, because it's selling me like they're gonna.
Well, I think that was just saying, I mean, if you say, well, you're not the only system out there, then maybe they do something. So, you gotta agree with me a hundred percent, I mean, that's a bubble to. All they can do is say no.
Yeah.
They ask it.
Okay. That's. That's for it. I got about just, uh, stupendous. Doing their thing slowly, they got held up with a, uh. Some sort of a, some sort of waste. I don't know, there's an excuse here, it's real. The sewer is pretty much where it was, uh, the revitalization is kinda spinning around a little bit, but. Hopefully, things will straighten up there.
Are they having a hard time getting people to bid on it?
I, I haven't talked with him in a week, has he said?
What is this, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually had an update on that, um, I had a conversation with Lydia last week. That led me to kinda wanna get a status on the project, I was gonna email Jen Bonn, actually was probably doing it a week ago, and I never got a response. Um, today, I did get a response, but not from Jen, it turned out that Jen Bonn is no longer with us. So, the woman, uh, inherited the account, uh, was going through Jen's email, her name was Tammy Kunsmer. And apparently, according to Tammy, Chris is gonna send us an update, but what she said is that the project is technically well told. But Chris has a clear direction as to what he needs to do next, so they look forward to resume shortly. And we're gonna consider on Jen's.
Is my account, I was just asking for a reason?
I think it goes back to that, the ship of, uh.
The windows?
The windows.
The district.
Tammy Kunsmer, her last name is, uh.
She came to the meeting, I think she came with Jennifer, didn't she? Oh, did she?
K U N Z M A N, she's the administrator.
Pretty sure she came to go side with Jennifer.
That's where that is, right? I thought I was seeing about Tom today, but it wasn't him.
Cause now Hunt, didn't Hunt send us a bill? And we, I know we didn't pay it, but did they ever say what the bill was for?
I think she, I think she did do some work towards it, right? I think, part of the invoice that we had to bill.
What's that?
The invoice, we talked about the, wasn't there?
Bills from rent and service room for services?
Yeah, but there's, there's no need to pay them yet.
Right, no, alright.
But I mean, there was that legitimate charges. I think so, okay.
Okay, coverage of four.
I talked to a state worker the other day, when he was unloading his excavator, to see what he was doing. And they're doing the sidewalks on Main Street, the handicap.
Crossings and.
The crossings. Might not do them all once, but that's beside the point, and they said, well, what about the sidewalks? And he said, the sidewalks are, the town is responsible for the sidewalks. They put them in and then it's responsibility of the town to fix the sidewalks.
I've been thinking it for.
So, is there any way that we can figure out who exactly is responsible for the sidewalks on Main Street?
If you wanted to set a scaffold there, to work in front of your building. You gotta get all kinds of stuff from the state, you gotta get insurance, you gotta get everything, because they won't lie to them. Set a scaffold on that sidewalk with all of them.
Cause it's state right away.
Cause it's state right away.
You might fall into the road and probably. And that, and they're logic.
Well, it's, it's, it's.
But if you have to repair it, it's the county responsible.
Right.
It's statutes, I, I wrote the statutes in the highway law.
We've been sitting here, we're the horn out, visit one, we guys have meetings here and.
But there.
I mean, they got eight guys up there.
Oh, I know.
Pumping around with a little bit of concrete for their sake, they could, eight guys, they could pour half that thing in two days.
I mean, wouldn't you kinda believe that it's their responsibility, they're changing them now, to make them handicap compliant?
Yes.
I mean, the sidewalk runs from across walk, I mean, both either ends, to me, it's, that's the state sidewalk.
That's correct. But it's the state.
So, we get after them, if we can actually change their street at the same time or redo it. I'm sure what they're gonna say is that the state installed handicap access. And the state changed a law that says how they have to be configured, so it's now the state's responsibility, or it'd be unfunded mandate to us.
Right.
For us to do it, so I, I'm, I'm sure that's gonna be their answer to that, but the rest of the sidewalk is yours and in the meantime.
Been fighting with them for years.
But it's not getting sidewalks fixed either. And to, uh, Mr. Carlton's point, you know, earlier, through the discussion on the budget, if you at some point don't start looking at things like that, that. We're not, I, I just don't anticipate it helping the state to fix the sidewalks, so if it's gonna be on us and they say it's on us. You know, unless we're bringing a lawsuit or, you know, saying that something's not right. It's probably gonna fall on our shoulders to do it at some point down the road. I don't know if there's any other way to. I mean, not that I want, the taxpayers have to pay for those, but at the same time, it's probably better than someone getting hurt, you know, tripping over sidewalk or. You know, someone that needs the handicap access for a wheelchair, might not be able to get down the sidewalk, but they'll get up onto the sidewalk.
Yeah, the other possibility is that, you know, we have that Main Street grant program that we're, you know, certainly having some hiccups, but it, but it's approved and. Work is, work is started, it'll start again. One of the natural extensions of that would be a streetscape grant, that would follow up on the completion of that work. And you might be able to finish some sidewalks into that.
It's a good idea, Steve.
Yeah, but that would, that would be a year, eight, nine months and a half.
Streetscape grants.
Yeah, like a follow-on to the Main Street upgrade grant, you follow and do it.
Well, we, of course, when we look at that, of course, because underneath, there's been at least two trip hazards. For people tripping, have been injured in front of the pole stoppers. And underneath that sidewalk is a hole. And I told the state that, and they poured that. They poured everywhere, top of that, those old river derrers. Yeah, I just. And it's, it's baffling. We were trying, and trying, and trying.
Well, to John's point.
I still call them once or twice a year.
I think to John's point, you know, probably one of these years in the near future, you know, if the grant deal doesn't pan out, then probably have to do something that's for liability purposes.
Well, we should probably take an assessment of, we'll probably have to do this, in our, take an assessment of what needs improvement. You know, spec it out and say, okay, this is the area, the target area that needs improvement, and then figure out cost.
Cause we go back to that, there was a sidewalk grant, but I think the minimum amount that you could apply for was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that neighborhood, and we just didn't have the sidewalks.
We could have a sidewalk all the way into itself, two hundred and fifty.
Right, so, and that was kinda the problem, is that it just kinda fell to the wayside, because.
Right.
There was a minimum amount.
But there might be other options.
But maybe there's an opportunity there between two different towns, you know, or three towns or something, that Famine's Park and Oka and us all went together on one, maybe it would.
I think the, the grant you were talking about, Pete, I think, didn't Bath get that, I think, and now, like, did the park area down there with outer lighting and?
Really, no, for example, it's out there, the streetscape area.
All the way down to Neva and up on the world bar, you know, it's good.
So, you got a huge grant, you're doing a lot of their.
It is a natural succession to a regular Main Street grant, so it would stand a good chance of maybe.
While we're looking into. And it doesn't just have to be that sidewalk grant.
Right.
Right.
And lighting.
I think you should ask Chris, cause I know Chris is, but it's also.
Yeah.
Because he likes talking about.
I don't know if he's that strange or not, but I've seen other communities applying for Main Street grants, and I've never seen one go through like his, that, just basically like that.
Well, he, he had a good plan.
He has a good plan.
Very, very detailed in terms of.
State of New York, that was extremely rapid.
Well, it's on the paper at this point.
It's still his last.
Not the green paper yet.
The grant was received, but it was a lot faster than the whole project.
You can, you can.
Anybody else?
Walk on a, in the park, because they need.
Take it off to the door?
Uh, yeah, um, I kinda hate to say it, cause I'm gonna be very unpopular, but. Maybe it wouldn't be bad to raise taxes a little bit, the community needs more money, it's very obvious, I've been to a lot of meetings, I know. There's a lot of need, I'd be willing to pay a little more of my own share toward the community. That's all I'm saying.
You gotta talk through this.
I, I've heard that, Steve, from a number of people. You're unpopular with me, Steve, to be honest with you, and, and the sixty-seven percent of the poverty level, you're probably pretty unpopular with, I mean, we're. I feel very fortunate, I'm able to pay my taxes, I can afford to pay more, but there's sixty-seven percent of this community that can't afford to pay more. That's my two cents, that's the way I look at it, I don't look at what I can afford, I look at what other people are gonna struggle to pay. And I'll, I'll fairness.
I wish there was a, a way to encourage, not so much to raise taxes, but encourage people to buy paintbrushes and paint. And just do the little things to some of these houses that, um, it wouldn't take much to love them, to make them look a hundred percent better than what they are.
No, there's some people that take pride, some people don't, I mean, I've got a twenty-one year old niece that's got a. Totally repaved up a complete house from, gutted the whole thing, Tommy now in her shop, and she actually bought the neighbor house, and they redo that as well, so, I mean. But you can't teach work ethic and, and pride and.
No, yeah, and responsibility.
Lenny?
Yes, sir. Okay, I remember raising this a couple of times over the years, saying that we should actually expand the tax base for some of these, uh, tasks. But my understanding is that if you have, there are different authorities, and you have people outside districts, and people outside the district. Uh, aren't, uh, you can't tax the people outside the district for something that's inside the district, just like. Aren't, you can't tax the people outside the district for something that's inside the district, just like you can't tax people outside the water district for that work, you know? So. If you have a situation where you thought that the town's people as a whole outside of these districts. Would be willing to pony up a bit more because if everything could get then diluted and get things done. Uh, you need to actually have some changes, you know, you have to have exceptions approved and all kinds of things from the state because that's legislated, right?
Well, we eliminated the sidewalk in the lighting district, is that what you're talking about?
So you're saying for the side market lighting district, that's not an issue and.
No, it's not anymore, we eliminated those districts.
Okay.
But as we are forced. Homes are selling, we've got kids on the streets again. So it is, it is making a little brighter. You know, there's still.
And if we can get some of these people to clean the properties up, Fred's working on it, it's not easy though.
The new assessments that will come out here next couple of years, our taxes will raise, you'll be, that'll make it epic. People are buying property for ninety thousand dollars for cleaning on the hillside. I mean, I mean, my property worth about two million now. So you get like a good pressure out of us. See, and I don't wanna try to sound like an ass to that comment, but there's. It's always bothered me knowing, growing up in this community, knowing where the poverty level is, you know, know a lot of this family, it's, it's a burden. I mean, the water district lost a lot of sleep, I might have been in the water district, but I lost a lot of sleep knowing that there's a lot of the older folks in town and, you know, a lot of people who aren't. Financially well off is, is now taking a burden of an additional forty dollars a quarter for this debt charge. Bothered me a lot, you know, and as much as I don't, I don't want to pay any more taxes either, don't get me wrong, but I can afford to do it. But that's not the, that's not the majority of the community unfortunately.
Let's find out if the board looked at the senior citizen exemption.
Not very likely.
Clearly it's rolling, right? Has their population changed?
Well, there's certainly an option there if you might look at helping the senior citizens out with their real property taxes.
When would we go, when would help, we get it started?
It's a local law that you've got. I'm sure you've got one on the books, I don't think we, I don't recall that we've done one since I've been here. You've got the local law. And there's, in the real property tax law, there's provisions for that. And you can actually, I've done it for a couple of towns, you set a scale that, that they're. Below a certain level and they get a certain percentage off and it's. Reverse based upon their income level.
So you'd have like a certain, and that would just be for seniors?
Senior citizens. There's veterans exemption too, this gentleman referred to here.
So it's similar to Star then? Like, like long stars?
Star's automatic.
Pretty much.
But it's similar though, isn't it?
Similar, and there's veterans exemptions, there's, there was a change a couple of years ago that allows exemptions for service during Cold War.
So we do have, um, the low-income senior citizen exemption, is that, we have that?
You can look at that and see if there needs to be a change.
Yeah, Steve, I, I, I definitely hear your point, I mean, I think Tony and I respectfully disagree on this, but. The one thing about the, the property taxes, that it, it burdens those who are best able to pay it, right? I mean, the higher your assessment, the higher your taxes, the less pain you feel, cause if you want a big piece of property, more likely than not, you're, you're doing okay. But, you know, there, Tony's point, I mean, yeah, I'm sure for some people it hurts. But on the whole, I, I think that the property taxes are probably the most progressive that we have and those who can best afford to pay it carry the burden, so.
I mean, you have to weigh, it's either pay the debt charge or don't have water service, so you know.
Well, a district is different than.
No, no, but I mean, but same thing, I mean, I know it was problematic to have an increase like that, but the alternative would have been to have the district all part.
Which goes back to the, having a study done to figure out what charges should be.
Right.
And justifiably so, as opposed to kind of falling into a, hey, this is breaking and we aren't gonna have water service here and we don't double the water rates. And hopefully can avoid those kind of things if you have a graduated scale, it gets you where you need to be and just work for it.
You know, I think it did definitely in the past, put us in a hole when we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on lawsuits and stuff in the past. You know, would have been better money spent towards the community than it would have been to make. Particular lawyers more rich and everyone else more rich, so. That's the frustrating part, and that was in the past, but available in the future.
Biggest, biggest enemies is gonna be, it happened on the way, and it's gonna, it's happening here. Local people owns, hides, and all of that way. They, property values, a lot of local people, we're not taught, that's, that's gonna happen here with property values or. Land built up terribly, or just vacant land, I mean, it's a. My grandkids, I don't know what they're gonna. Get it.
Well, that twenty-five acres right up above John, right corner of it, that side hill, man, I told him for, or it was, I don't know if I ended up getting ninety grand out of it, but that's what they were asking for it. And then it was on the market for a couple of weeks, it was about it and it was gone.
It's crazy.
Did you wanna talk about the, uh, landfill and cannabis? I know Jeanette's out in the hallway waiting.
Yeah, my story. What you doing, you're jetting or the?
Well. As long as we can come back to cannabis, cause that's kind of got a tight constraint on it.
Very much so, yeah, very much so. We get this straightened out.
Well, she's here for the budget. We're gonna have the budget workshop after the meeting.
I don't think it's gonna happen.
Well, I just wanna talk to her about it.
They'll, they have a couple of exceptions.
Yeah, yeah.
You're on the hot seat.
Hi, I'm on the hot seat, you guys can go, I didn't do.
Well, we got clarification from John, we have this, this interest payment for the USDA rural development. Project, is there any principal payment associated with this or is it just?
You already paid the principal at the beginning of the year.
Okay, so that's how it's only, well.
It's principal and interest and then interest.
Okay, so it doesn't, it's not a monthly, it's a one, one time at a set time, you know, it's coming. Cause I see, I mean, the budget for it, so.
What could we decide on the water district, one that that was?
That was bills, the, the.
Bills that we have to pay the county?
No, not.
On the water district.
We pay the water district, but it was, I think it was the way the voucher was written, they weren't sure if it was.
What the bottom line is on it?
Yeah, so this is all the different, um, locations, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Within the town.
Mm-hmm.
This one, John said we're not paying?
She doesn't know, cause I, she wasn't really signing the vouchers. It's, uh, we control. They've, they've enforced it up to me, I hadn't ordered anything. We'll discuss it tomorrow.
Alright.
But I've been trying to call them and they won't answer the phone and.
Alright.
For some reason we're obligated, I guess we signed it, but.
I don't pay it, then you tell me.
Right.
And then there was appropriations for youth service.
Mm-hmm.
Did we tap off, oh, go over the nine hundred dollars?
You only.
Or did we appropriate out of there and put into it?
No, I, what did you have in the budget for twenty twenty?
Was it nine hundred, I think?
Twenty twenty-one, right? Oh, yeah, sorry, twenty twenty-one, sorry.
Nine hundred?
So. Because, um, you had.
Where is it? The youth services.
You only had five hundred.
No, that's youth recreation.
That's what it is.
Yeah, but no, this is youth services. Youth service.
Oh, well, sorry, it's not forty-one, it's four, it's all youth service, just youth rec.
Oh, so they went over the budget?
Yeah, cause you only had five hundred and you gave five hundred to, for ninety-five to the, um, for the.
Soccer.
And then you got paid for the Larizol trees out of that, so.
Oh, wait a minute, Larry's, oh.
Comes out of that for the.
People who have seven, kid peeing on the side of the road.
Yeah, no, 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 got it. Okay, so youth services also covers Larry, the board bodies?
Mm-hmm. Alrighty.
Youth services or the youth rec?
Youth rec.
Okay.
Point four, not the point four-one.
Okay.
Got it.
Thank you.
No.
I don't know that we're doing the budget.
Yes, Jeanette, thank you for coming.
You could have called and said, hey, we're not doing the budget, I mean, you could trip all the way up here.
Hey, I'll send you a text.
Well, we had questions, we have these questions. So we're not doing this budget, I know.
Cause we still gotta discuss cannabis and.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, well, these are all, that's where the things that.
Apologies, you should have.
Old business.
I mean, more than that.
Yeah.
Well, should we, well, yeah, should we? I make a motion to pay the bills as presented.
A second.
With the exception of the bill that we didn't order and therefore we're not paying.
Paying those as presented with exceptions of the, uh.
Industrial, industrial can?
Oh, industrial can, okay, we didn't receive. All favor.
Aye.
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 Aye, Carrie. Old business, business.
Uh, appropriations.
Might be the appropriations are okay?
Yes.
Oh, we have to get active.
I'll make a motion to approve the appropriations as presented.
A second.
Motion made second to approve appropriations presented, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Is that Tommy or Pete?
Hey, what's that? I'll get the old business. We're here.
We haven't done any, any other area. It's been through a term stuff, but I asked.
Landfill.
I'd like to discuss that at the end of the meeting and a closed session, I'll leave a council if you don't mind.
Figure it out.
It wouldn't be an executive session, it'd be a closed session, probably on council.
Uh, new business. Uh, it's Steve Callard, when their, their constable is leaving us first of the year. They're missing, I, probably should be hard, hard to fill that.
May I have a good job, you can.
I've never seen Eman for that.
Oh, that'd be good.
Yeah, I need one.
But I think we're, uh, if we can get, if necessary, if it's been done before, we can get sheriff's department or somebody here.
Will they charge for that? Well, you're talking about for court, will they charge for that? The county?
To my eyes, it did before, uh, there was just, I know we have, at the time, so we had those.
Good to have in there, especially with some of these home things we've got coming up. Especially the one in particular.
Are we going to?
Well, we, we need to check on cannabis.
Yeah, no, I mean, are we going to consider, uh, looking for another?
Council.
Constable?
Yeah, do we put, like, something out there from a public notice that we're looking?
That requires.
Look for requirements? There, unless you want to carry it. So it could be anybody. You must have some retired troopers, deputies living around here.
How should I have another gig though?
Better offer, so to speak?
I don't want.
That's definitely not better.
So do you guys want a notice in the paper?
I think you should.
And you wanna let me know what the wording on that should be?
Oh, sure.
Well, you could, could we, I mean, we could kind of word it, you know, it'd be prefer.
Preferably not.
Salary, commencement, service experience, and capability, something like that.
No, what, background?
No, I'm lost.
Just doing laws?
I think, yeah, they have the most experience.
No.
Cannabis?
Let me just say one thing about the. Resource of the church. I, we had a meeting and we, I think we've made good progress. We've made some changes to the agreement. And I, I don't think there's gonna be any opposition from the church, we gotta go through the Presbyterian, all that stuff, it's gonna take some time, but. I think the church is pretty much in agreement with this.
I didn't think we clarified, you know, cause they were thinking, oh, you know, we, we're turning a profit here and they wanted some upfront money and we're like, we're, this is not a profit.
Some more they got, and you were making money on it, so.
Yeah, and we're like, the people who are in the district pay for the district, it would be only the people who are paying for the district that would give you that upfront money. You know, so that is, but they, then, I mean, it was just, I think, an ignorance of the, the situation and once they heard it, they're like, oh, okay, they were quite agreeable.
Once they heard it's actually illegal to make money.
Right.
Did, uh, just out of curiosity, cause I saw, it, I don't know if I just didn't notice the, the recent copy of the agreement that we just got. Recently, the most recent?
Yeah, it was one that came.
That, it was edited after the meeting, I assume, so.
Yeah, we changed, we added, sort of, a few things.
Which I, it may have been on the original one too, but like the whole, like, legal expenses on their part. The only thing that concerned me about that is I read it, I was like, like, you know, basically any and all legal expenses they incur, we would be responsible for. Is, like, what are we signing up for there? Like, I, I don't, like, there's not a.
You're saying it's not.
A cap, it's not an open checkbook to have them. Excite the sewer or, yeah, I don't.
So I think what you're saying is, yeah, I mean.
I don't know that a cap is the right thing or that they would be agreeable to that, but.
How about, how about the word reasonable?
The limitation.
And that, not including any litigation against the town or the.
Well, that's what, yeah, I think it needs to be, cause essentially this, I think the cost of the wa, the sewer district or the town is gonna be liable for. Would be closing cost or whatever, you know, title searches and.
I mean, which, I guess that's fine, it may be normal and expected, but.
Well, they're gonna need an attorney to look at this stuff and the Presbyterian may require, I don't, they still have these, uh. Attorney in Geneva years ago, I was dealing with my husband.
But I don't want to, so if you're out and have a fifty thousand dollar bill, you don't let that go.
We'll address that, you should, and, thank you for that info, appreciate that. Cannabis? There's several aspects of this that you can look at and consider. The opting out does not remove the legality of using cannabis in the town. It merely means that if you adopt that, that, uh, there can be no sales establishments or onsite use establishments in the town. We're running out of time on that, I, it was my understanding, as we discussed this several months ago, that the town didn't wanna go down that road. To do it, it has to be adopted by the end of the year. And in my view, it's a land use issue because you're prohibiting a use of land for particular purposes. So I put it the same category as zoning, which means you gotta do secret, you gotta send it to the county to two thirty-nine hour, you know, that you ends up thirty days ahead of it. So if we're gonna even talk about this, we need to, we're gonna need special meetings to get it done by the end of the year. Additionally, it's subject to permissive referendum, which means if somebody files a petition. Additionally, it's subject to permissive referendum, which means if somebody files petition, a proper petition, uh, they can require a referendum on it. If there's a referendum, uh, it would have to be a standalone referendum because the timing of this would be that it can't be in a general election in November, which is two or three weeks away. And it would be a standalone referendum, which means the county who runs your elections, correct? County where elections are. They probably charge you, and the last time I was involved in one of these things, it cost the town at least three thousand, that's ten years ago. So you got a cost there. Additionally, if you opt out, you don't share in the revenue from it. There's an excise tax and, uh, that the state imposes and it's split with the county and the town or the city that's involved. And if you opt out, you don't share in that.
And it was my understanding that there's an opt-in clause, they're not gonna license those facilities until twenty-two or early twenty-three. Couldn't we, couldn't we opt in before that and still collect the excise tax?
Opt-in means, Pete, that you adopt the opt-out, and once the regulations go into effect, you see that it's not gonna be. Something that ruins the municipality and therefore you repeal the opting out law.
Right, but we give us to formulate a thoughtful law around this, trying to whip it together.
Correct. Now.
If we don't opt out, I mean, can we still pass, like, regulations about?
That's the next thing. If you don't opt out, you can do this through zoning. You can have setback requirements. With this particular state law, you can even regulate, as long as it's not overly burdensome, hours, that sort of thing.
So, I mean, do we have to do that before the seventy-third first, or you could?
Negative.
Okay.
The early, as I put in my memo, the earliest that regs are gonna be in place at the end of twenty-two, probably end of twenty-three. There's a commission that's gonna adapt, that's gonna formulate those regs. The, the governor just finished appointing the people to it about ten days ago. They've gotta go through the whole formulation process, uh, public comment period, adaption. And then people are going to have to start applying for permits and. You got time to work on alternatives for opting out.
So if we don't opt out, no one's gonna be able to pop up with a establishment in the next six months?
Correct.
Because they have to still go by this date.
Correct.
I, you know.
Let me just put, give you a caveat. You, if you're gonna mess around with zoning, you gotta get it in place before there's any permits granted because. Once you have a use established, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, you can't do a way of it.
But it's, right, so I think, Angela, I think I'm following the same, you're saying, just sort of everything. So really, we don't do anything, just if we don't plan opting out.
Correct, not now, but don't put it off forever.
Right.
I know we got a lot of stuff on our.
No, no, understood, I just.
Right.
I mean, really, I think that we need to focus on is the actual law at this point, right? Because this is just, if you're opting out.
Opting out is by local law, it's gotta be done by the end of the year, then there'd be a referendum. You can always repeal it and opt back in, as Pete referred to later on, after you know what the regs are, and some places are doing that. Like I also said, it'd be hard pressed to get this done by the end of the year because of the public hearing, referral, county planning board, doing the secret and so forth.
Well, I think it costs, it would be costly to write law to opt out.
No, it's not.
Well, well, but it's your char, I mean, it's your time and.
That's true.
There's, there's time involved, I mean, anytime you pass a law, there's cost.
That's, that's true. It's, it's gonna cost a few hundred bucks, and I'm not advocating to do that, because I don't.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm okay with not opting out, I mean, I, you know.
I think you have time, like you're saying, I mean, you're, you're looking at the late part of twenty-two to, in early twenty-three. I mean, that gives you. Is, is there a point at which someone applies for a permit? So like, without the regulations, they really can't apply for a permit in the next three or four months?
That's what I'm saying.
But we have that sort of later.
Well, in order to have something in place prior to the establishment of the regulations, and if there's pressure to push those forward sooner. Um, you know, like, July or August, then we just have to have something in place.
If you're gonna do the zoning.
Before then.
I recommend you have it in place by the end of next summer. I was gonna say something else, uh, oh. If this is anything like liquor licenses, beer and wine licenses, the municipality will receive a notice and have some input. It doesn't necessarily mean the state's gonna go along with what you're asking for or asking not to happen, but you're gonna have, you're gonna know that somebody's applying, most likely. And you're probably gonna hear about it ahead.
It's anything like that, people can't afford to fly bro.
All right, now, let's, let's talk about the onsite consumption thing. That's a whole different animal than the onsite purchases, and they can't be one and the same under the law. Onsite consumption is gonna require, um, a lot of controls because. If you have an establishment that allows smoking of any type, you have to have ventilation. So you don't want onsite consumption in a building or next to a building where there's other people living, that sort of thing. So to have an onsite consumption over in that business block would be ridiculous. If you wanna put it out and somebody's back for you, that's fine.
And my concern with leaning on zoning for this is that we don't know what the state regulations are gonna be.
Correct.
And I don't, I know that through informal polling and stuff on Facebook that I did, that most people support having this type of thing in, in town. Um, my concern is that if we don't know that these cafe owners, or you wanna call them, for lack of a better word. Are gonna have the same liabilities as, as of our owner in terms of cutting people off or whatever, that changes the equation for me. As far as onsite consumption, if I don't know how we control that with zoning, if, if there are limits on.
Just location and hours, if you do that, another aspect. The way the law is written, the state law is written, as long as the regulations that you impose are not overly burdensome to the point where. It's practical to have an establishment, in other words, you're trying to prohibit it by putting the regs on, um, then you're okay.
Well, yeah, we're okay, but someone could still get hurt. I mean.
Well, that's true.
I mean, there, there is a, there is an effect to, to smoking and stuff, is just as there is to drinking too much alcohol. And you're currently, some, some serving too much alcohol can be, they're liable, but we don't know if that's the case.
Probably is very similar, probably, but we don't know all the.
And I, I think the only way to wait for that is to opt out, the only way to find out for sure.
Some of the towns they represent are doing that.
No, they're opting, you can opt out of the consumption, onsite consumption, without opting out of the onsite.
That's correct.
Sales.
That's great.
But if you opt out, I mean, there's a possibility you're gonna lose out on some of that potential revenue.
But what Pete's saying is, wait till the regs come out, see what's going on, and then if you want to. Then, so to speak, you repeal that local law, and then you're in the ballpark again for sharing the revenue.
If you have a lot of us gonna take the shit of licenses, we might not lose out on anyone.
No, I understand. Twenty-two years, three years before this state gets on, so.
Well, I don't think they're gonna take all that long.
They want the revenue.
They want the dollars.
It's just like when, I can still remember when guys were going to prison for gambling. And then the state thought, oh, we can make money off of that, so all of a sudden, the same thing.
Subzero, perfect.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, another area that you may wanna look at is prohibiting smoking in, in town parks and also on town property. And if you're gonna do that, you gotta consider whether you're gonna prohibit tobacco and cannabis and vaping. Public health laws, state of New York defines smoking marijuana the same way we define smoking tobacco, have a separate definition of vaping, which you can prohibit all three of those. There is a distinction in my mind, some, uh, attorneys with, I deal with that this. NICOM, which is the Association of Towns' equivalent for villages, think that if, if you're gonna allow marijuana, you gotta allow, uh, smoking tobacco. However, the state of New York still considers smoking cannabis or using it in any other way as an intoxicant. And there's a differentiation there with tobacco. You cannot sit, even sit in a car that's not outback, not running, and smoke marijuana, nor can a passenger smoke marijuana. And obviously, you can't drive while there's influence of marijuana. Those are the options, some places like the villages I represent are talking about prohibiting. Smoking on sidewalks and streets, but I don't think you have that issue here.
They certainly have down New York City. Holy moly. It's like walking in the middle of a chicken chung, we.
You can't, you can't consume cannabis without a hundred feet of a, uh, school building entrance or exit, or playing field. My primary concern would be the park out here. That you have kids going store.
Uh, like I said, I, I'm not into any of that, but I do think, uh, it definitely should be allowed. But I do think that on Main Street, as far as consumption, I think is, is an issue. There's a lot of kids that walk down that sidewalk going to and from school. Not saying there can't be a, you know, something on the side street or something, but I think on Main Street's not, not a very good idea to have consumption.
I mean, when I think about it on the Main Street sidewalk. Already, I'm over in, I don't think I'm speaking out of school, but there's complaints, you know, where the tavern is and the, uh, Mustang Pub. People standing outside or sitting out in those chairs. So then people walking by, it's a lot of tourists over there, they didn't like it, so Village is looking at that over there.
Excuse me, Letty?
Yes, Parker here. That's you.
Yes, uh, can you, uh, as far as the establishment to sell, you could zone part of the town for that, right?
That's why I just talked.
Yeah, okay. And everything that you're talking about with all these problems, that, that could potentially occur. It sounds like to me that if you don't have enforcement, who knows what's gonna happen? It could turn into the Wild West, and you have, you're talking about, uh, having a constable. Where are you gonna be located? How's he gonna actually enforce this?
That's for court, the other constables just.
Oh, just a court constable?
Just court.
Okay, then, are you gonna have people, are you gonna have, uh, the state police come trolling on through quite frequently in order to make sure that people aren't violating these laws?
Probably the same way they did when we had the bars uptown. I mean, it's, to me, it's the same, it's the same thing.
Okay.
I mean, in my opinion, I mean, it's.
Okay, I don't know, so how, how was that handled?
Uh, they never came through town, people dumped their vehicles and drove drunk, I mean. That's, that's just what happens, I mean, I don't know if you're gonna police it or not, quite honestly.
Enforcement's an issue because it's a local law, the sheriff, usually the state troopers don't like to enforce local laws, that's my experience anyways. And you don't have PD here, so the sheriff would be the one, and he's elected, so usually I found the sheriffs are willing to work with towns and enforcing their local laws.
I think it all fair to John, it's gonna be new to everyone, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's something that the sheriff department, maybe I'll add more resources on, or dedicate more resources to it, but, I don't know.
All twenty-four of them?
Well, it'd be who's, uh, even the bar owner that control that himself, because he's, he's got liability there.
Well, not only that, but some of your customers come in and they don't want people acting up, and that just costs them business and the backside of that.
Anyway, unless you're gonna, thinking about seriously opting out, you're gonna do anything right now, but if you're gonna think about opting out. We're gonna start moving now.
I think I can agree with Angela on that, is if we're not, if we have. The idea that we, that the community wants, you know, like I said, I read the same kind of social media post that Pete had on there, and. It looks overwhelmingly positive for wanting to have a dispensary, both.
Both, yeah.
So I just think, like Angela was saying, I think we're, we're kind, I mean, it's only a couple hundred dollars here or there, but we're kind of wasting time and money and energy. On opting out of something that eventually it's gonna be more.
I think Pete made a good point.
No worries.
About the zoning aspect. You can always adopt zoning and then opt back in, after you know what the regs are.
I totally agree.
Well, if we don't opt out, though, we still can do, I mean, obviously, we don't know what the state regs are, but.
I mean, I guess the only time you're gonna run into a jam is if they, all of a sudden, which we know, all of a sudden it doesn't work like that, just turn over the regulations in February, and then you're in a jam.
It's gonna be towards the end of the year, but.
So I think you'd be in a jam then, but going on in the year, that gives plenty of time to, I would think, to come up with something.
I wouldn't worry so much about the sales establishments, the locations for them. Wouldn't be bad if they had one right over here, while you're not walking out the front door. But the onsite consumption, you really wanna.
That's where, I mean, just because of the, mainly, I mean, for people walking down Main Street, you don't want the kids running through that.
True.
But onsite would mean inside, I mean, you could, you could zone.
No, it's, it's inside, yeah, you don't.
But I mean, you could, you could make it illegal to be out on the sidewalk.
I think you ought to seriously consider that.
Yeah, but I mean, but when you're saying onsite consumption.
Onsite means one of these.
Inside. Yeah, like the smoking, the, 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 like the smoke shops.
Exactly.
But, you know, the kids theoretically, you know, they're not, I'm assuming there's going to be an age restriction on these places.
I'm sure.
Yeah, they're doing it.
Huh? For getting, yeah, for going in.
Twenty-one.
Okay.
That's already in law.
Are we sure it's inside?
Um, they probably can have patios outside.
That's what I mean, that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you could also put it in there, because they'd have to be on the.
Out back.
You could have maybe something that they're gonna have, that's gonna have to be out back, behind the buildings.
In quote, you know, like some barber do, but it's in quote.
So somebody can't, you can't just keep, you know.
You know, the bars are different, because over in Penn Anne, they get alcohol on the sidewalks and six or seven buses. That's different, and they allow that with these things, I don't think.
It's, it's state legal in the law, in our state law.
We don't think we want it like that. I think we have to even weed out some of this crap.
No, we would go. My God. How long you been thinking that one?
I've been here for an hour.
Well, you know, it's interesting, because Naples has that forum, I would, why don't you go, I think it's tomorrow night, if I'm not mistaken, I don't have a lot of time, but. Their villages having a, a, a community discussion, um, to weed or not to weed. Shanks, I, that was, but they, they're, the people are coming to have a, a discussion, they want community input.
Penn Anne had a public hearing, it was split right down the middle, they had thirty people speaking, I think it was fourteen and fifteen.
I don't see a dispensary out of these, we can't, it's for a while anyway, because people are gonna keep buying it illegal before they have to pay a big price on a dispensary. That's the truth of all of that right there.
They're growing.
That's exactly it.
People, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not a fan, but I think the people who are predisposed to using it are already using it.
Right.
The people, I mean, I don't think you're gonna see a rash of new marijuana users just because it's legal, you know.
I think over time, I think over time, you're like.
Maybe.
Yeah, I don't try to look.
But, you know, I mean, there's a lot of people who say it helps them medically, so, you know. You know, you know, I, I do.
I know, there's some.
I, I worked in drug court for fifteen years, so I don't buy any of that crap.
He did buy the good stuff.
I did buy the good stuff.
I tell you, the dispensary, the reservation.
Smoking mirrors around here.
The Mohawk Reservation has no less than, than twenty dispensaries now, and it's like leaving a football stadium, watching traffic coming in and out of the place, I mean, it's unbelievable. The amount of people that are going in and out.
And we think in this area, there's a high youth level.
You know, right.
I see what you did there, I knew so, good job. I know what you're saying, and. Move this to a.
See, it is time to call the courts, because Bill's playing truly.
But I'll be, I mean, what, if, we opted out of onsite consumption, how, I mean, like you said, our time is running out, obviously.
Wanna do it, we have to start, we're gonna need at least one special meeting.
One and a public hearing.
And a public hearing. And do the secret, have to do an FEA, full environmental self-informed center in the county, and adapt it by the end of the year. Do you have a, do you have a end of the year meeting? Between Christmas and...
Have it, well, we have one in December, but...
I know, but I'm not gonna, because everybody has a, whatever the meeting is.
Right, right, but it's, we all put it in.
How you doing, John, how you doing?
I'm doing fine.